Broadcast has been sent.
The time is now five oh one P M. I call to order the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two Policy and Governance Committee meeting. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I am Judy McInnes Murray, Chair for the Policy and Governance Committee, and an at-large board member. We will now have introductions of committee members, starting with board members, administrative staff, and guests, and board staff. We will start with Sonia Williams. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Sonia Williams. I'm the Vice Chair of the Board of Education, and I represent District Nine and happy to be here.
Hi, Pamela Boozer Struthers. I represent District Three, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee.
Hello, Alvarez Ron Rees, student member of the Prince George's County Board of Education and member of the Policy and Governance Committee.
Valerie, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Valerie Irvin. I'm the Board Liaison for the Administration.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Robin Welsh, the Director of Compliance and Ethics.
Mrs. Stewart?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Keith Stewart, the Director of Purchasing and Supply Services.
Ms. Libby?
Good evening, Kyra Libby, Strategic Initiatives Officer.
Dex?
Good evening, Nina Jacks, Project Manager in the Strategic Initiatives Office.
And Miss Ward?
Good evening, Selena Ward, Strategic Initiatives Office, Project Manager.
And a staff member?
Annie Ellis, Board Administrative Assistant.
Thank you all and welcome, and I appreciate seeing so many experts in the room this evening with the Policy and Governance Committee. Thank you so much. May I have a motion to approve the May seventeen, twenty twenty-two meeting agenda as amended on board docs?
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. May I have a motion to approve the April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The minutes are approved. Public comment. There were no registered public comment speakers this evening. Now we will start with three point O policies to review for action. Public comment review draft policies, zero one oh seven Ethics Regulations, eleven twenty Maryland Public Information Act, M P I A, Student Registered Sex Offender Entry Onto School Property, and Pregnant and Parenting Students. Ms. Welsh, would you give us a summary of the comments received from the public, and if any changes to the policies are required?
Yes, I'll be glad to. So the first policy is the ethics policy, and basically the 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 comments that we received were pretty much in favor of the information that we did have. In the ethics policy, there was one question about when there is a problem. Do we actually does it go to criminal justice if there's an ethics violation? And of course, the answer is the Ethics Panel. It goes to the Ethics Panel for, you know, for the to investigate a complaint. But other than that, there was nothing, nothing there of any substance that would impact any changes to the ethics policy. And the other thing that's so important to also make sure the public understands is that the ethics policy itself is basically driven by what's in the law and what the Ethics Commission approves. So there we don't, the school system doesn't have that much that many options when it comes to the ethics policy.
Okay. Keep going. Next policy.
Okay, then let me move this one out.
Eleven twenty, if that's where you're going next.
So the Public Information Act request is the next one, I think you have on your, yes. And the only, the only comment that we did receive that had any, that was of any significance had to do with, well, I shouldn't say they're insignificant, but that would cause us to look at would be the, someone asked the question, why don't we post all every piece of information we have on the website? And of course, there's a lot, we have a lot of information that is considered public record, which is, is created through the course of business, you know, that the school system does. But if we were to post every single thing that we're involved in in our course of business, it would clutter the website and actually not make it very user-friendly for, for the important information that the, that the public really wants to look at and get to. So that's why we don't post every single thing on the website. And then, let's see, the next one is the Student Registered Sex Offenders. And the question that, there was one comment where I think one of the people were, the people that provided comments were concerned about had to do with the fact that everyone was in favor of the, first of all, in favor of the policy, and the fact that, of course, they do not want their own children to be, to be, you know, impacted or exposed to sexual offenders. So that's, that's why they were definitely in favor of the policy. But there was one question that had to do with about why do we even allow the student to come back? And it's very clear that the law says that if, in fact, they do come off of the registry, then they absolutely, you know, they, we are required to transition them back into the school environment. And it might mean that we have to put some type of safety plan together just to ensure the safety of everyone. But those would be preliminary things we would do as we put the transition plan together for the student. And there was a question, and actually, Board Member, Board Member Williams, you had asked this question when we looked at this policy before, which had to do with how long do you stay on the, on the registry? And so actually, when someone goes on the registry, there's three tiers of people being on the registry. And the registrants that are tier one are registrants that remain on the registry for fifteen years. Tier two is the registrants that remain on the registry for twenty-five years. And tier three is the registrants that remain on the registry for life. And that, that decision of tier one, tier two, tier three depends on the nature and severity of the, of the sexual offender's conviction, what they were convicted for. So there's a few, Maryland has an extensive book. It's called the Maryland Sexual Offender Registry, that has all this information, and they have long lists of crimes that you can be convicted for that would place you on either tier one, tier two, or tier three.
Okay, if you can take a break for a minute. I see Ms. Williams' hand, Board Member Williams' hand.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Welsh, I really appreciate this information. I was really concerned about how long, because I was, I didn't know that there were these tiers and different number of years. So I think it's important for us to know when we're making these kinds of decisions, what is the long-term effect on our students, especially if a student is young and they're put on this list and then they're there for life. That was my understanding, that once you're on the list, you're always on the list. So I appreciate that clarification. It, it makes me feel much better knowing that there are tiers of offenses. And if should one of our students be put on that list, they have an opportunity for a second chance. I really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay, and Ms. Welsh, you have one more?
I do.
Pregnant and parenting?
Yes. So that particular policy, we actually received a lot of comments, and a lot of our comments, questions that people have, and how are we handling different situations for students who are pregnant or who are parenting? Probably, so the first question, one of the comments that came up had to do with students who are pregnant, and can they participate in athletics? And yes, they can participate in athletics. They are, they are protected. Pregnancy is actually a protected class under Title IX. And so therefore, they absolutely have a right to protect, participate. And actually, there's a lot of athletes out there that, that are, that have been pregnant and, and actually, you know, are participating in athletics. The issue, of course, comes down to the safety of the student and, of course, the, the child that they're carrying. And there would have to be a medical approval and medical release. As far as the actual specifics, I did talk to both the Supervisor of Nursing, and then I also spoke to Risk Management to try to get some information about that, about this. And Risk Management provided several different questions as it relates to making sure the type of medical release that we would require to ensure that the, the doctor is actually releasing the student specifically to be able to participate. And of course, parent consent, the parent of the, of the student who's going to be the parent, the, the future grandmother or grandfather getting their consent also for the student to be able to participate in athletics. So personally, I think these are things that we would want to include in the administrative procedure. And what I'm going to do is work with General Counsel to get the other information to the questions that Risk Management asks so that we can put together some in the administrative procedure that does give the students the opportunity, but at the same time limits our liability as a school system. The other question that came up, a couple of different places, comments that came up had to do with the length of time that the student is allowed, the absences, ten excuse, excused absences. And actually, I did talk, again, I talked to the Associate Superintendent of Student Services.
You muted yourself.
The Associate Superintendent of Student Services as well as the Nursing Supervisor. And they actually provide, for students who are pregnant, they work with them right from the very beginning. And they, when they're going through their, when, once they've had their child, they actually are on home and hospital for six to eight weeks. And the reason being is because when, when a person delivers a baby, they end up usually needing about at least six weeks of recuperation time, physically, you know, to physically recuperate. And so therefore, what they do is they allow them, they provide all their education on home and hospital, depending on how long the doctor says they need to be out. And so it's anywhere generally from six to eight, eight weeks, based on the doctor's orders. And they said they do not have to, because that was a concern about making the student come back to school ten days after they've had a baby. So that we, they are very good about that. The other thing is, is that they spend a lot of time, once the student comes back to school, they have, they have, the nurses are actually helping them with case management, and they help them with their doctor's visits. They help them like, go get the information and work with them in terms of making sure they understand what the doctor is telling them they have to do or having to do what their follow-up doctor's visits are, doctor's appointments, so they make sure the student makes it to the follow-up appointment. So they get a lot of support from our nursing staff if they're a parent and student and have just had a baby. The other, the question that came up had to do with, actually about staff. And what they, we provide, it says we'll provide all these resources for students. What about resources for staff? And what I also found out is that we have the Employee Assistance Program, E A P, which is one of the benefits for working for Prince George's County Public Schools. And that program actually has extensive, I guess, a program for a parent, a teacher who, or a staff member who has just had a baby, provides lots of resources in terms of like providing their, finding daycare, whatever kinds of resources a parenting student, teacher would need. They do provide that. And then the other question that came up in numerous places had to do with the, the room, the lactation room, and what is provided for the lactation room. And of course, we did not put any of that into the policy at this point, only because of the fact that that would be something that would be placed in the administrative procedure. And the, the law itself, it does, all it requires is that there's at least a seating option with a flat surface and electrical outlet nearby to accommodate placement of a breast pump device. We can't, you can't be using a bathroom or a closet as a room. And then they, you have to provide the lactating student with access to refrigerate, a refrigerator located reasonably close to the private lactation space required under, under this particular section of the law. So those are the minimum requirements that we are provided, that we are required to provide for a lactation room. And then another comment that came out was, why is this only pertaining to high school? Why are we only having lactating rooms in the high schools? And the reason that we are, that it says specifically high school is because the mandate that with this, when this bill was passed, it says that it requires each high school to designate a private lactation space in the school. So it is not requiring middle schools to designate a private lactation space. And I know, Board Member Williams, you had expressed concern about what if you have any students that are lactating? Do you have to designate a room, which I, which you wouldn't, is when you have a student, when you look at what you have to have for a room like that, it would be easily, easy to set up a room quickly for a student that ends up being pregnant and then they're lactating. But in general, it's not like you have to hold a room open all year long for, you know, for a student. But space is a major concern, so the mandate is for high school. So to put that out for all middle schools at this point, I'm not sure that is something that we would want to move forward. Of course, that is your call. But I will say this, if a student did have a child in middle school, I can't imagine any one of our schools not, especially with the nursing support we have, not setting up, and actually, our counselor support too, not working to set something up to, to provide that student the opportunity, you know, to have a lactating room. So I think that basically covers all of the requirements and the specifics that they're, that they talk about are things that I, and and that was a very fortunate consequence. I happened to speak with Elizabeth Faison, Faison, who is the Associate Superintendent of Student Services, and she was actually meeting with her committee on developing the administrative procedure that goes with this policy. So with such perfect timing, so I was able to ask all these questions of them, then they had some questions for me. But they were, they were very helpful, and they said these are all things that they would include, that they would address the specifics in the administrative procedure.
Okay, are you, is your presentation complete?
I, it is.
Okay, I, I thank you so much. It, it helps me to understand that the administration takes public comments very seriously. Board members, I, I see Vice Chair Pamela Boozer Struthers.
Yeah, thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Welsh, for going through all of that. You did touch on the few that I actually wanted to ask more questions about. For the administrative procedures, can middle school be added? In, in the administrative procedure, to be clear that, that we're aware of that, that it's not just a high school.
I think, I think, I think that absolutely could be, it could be added. I, in fact, I can talk to Ms. Faison and, you know, and follow up with her on that. You know, I mean, unless you have.
Yeah, because I, yeah, because I, I certainly noted that as well, and I, I had missed, you know, that it had, you know, I hadn't taken that in, it said high school. So I want to say to everyone who spent time on public comment, thank you, because things were caught. And I, of course, you know, know that.
You're breaking up a little bit, Pam. You're breaking up.
You know, middle school students also need these services that I'm on. Can you hear me now?
It's better.
Okay, sorry about that. The other is the, can you clarify again the lactation room services for staff as well as students? The, you had described how for students, this could be set up as needed. Is, is that the same as staff? Or what are, what is that, you know, are they equal at this point in time?
So that, I would have to, that particular question you're asking, as far as the lactating room for staff, I would have to check into that specific, that question. I don't have that answer. What I do know, and the one comment had to do with, are we providing similar kinds of resources? For example, childcare and information about childcare and those kinds of things. And actually, E eight, there are, our Employee Assistance Program actually provides all those kinds of supports and resources to help the, the employee get on their feet again and get whatever they need to be able, you know, to get back to work, but at the same time do what they need to do as a parent. But I can certainly check into, just as an information point, what it is we're offering for the, the teachers. If they offer anything beyond the, you know, a place to sit, the refrigerator nearby, electrical circuit, that kind of thing. I can check into that.
Yeah, because I just wanted to comment that I think that this really resonated with a lot of people in the system, teachers, parents, guardians. And I, I do think questions have been raised about if we are doing enough, and I, I think we should continue to discuss this and plan ahead, possibly in new construction, are we thinking ahead to this need? So I just wanted to raise that I, I think there's more that our employees and parents and the public want to understand about the provision of kind of a high, high-quality, good experience lactation room in our schools. So I'll, I'll just end there.
Okay, and I appreciate that. Real quickly, and then we'll go to Ms. Williams. Ms. Welsh, the pa, the pregnant and parenting students policy, is that the place that we would deal with the issue of lactating for the teachers, or is there someplace else?
No, that, that would, that would, that we wouldn't want to put it into this policy because that's specific to students. And I, and we can look at our other policies to see if there's any particular place. I also wanted to look, and quite honestly, I didn't get the opportunity to do that this, today, because I didn't get, there were comments didn't come out till yesterday's evening. So I was just trying to move quickly to get information. But I do, I want to look at the negotiated agreements because there could be language in some of the negotiated agreements that, that actually talk about providing a space. So I wanted to double-check that to see what might be sitting in the, in, in those agreements.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify where it should be. Board members, Sonia Williams?
Thank you. My, my questions were really covered, in particular, on the middle school piece. I think that we should just add that as a language. It will be in addition to, we won't be decreasing what, what, what is required by law by adding the middle schools. But I think that although we, we hope that it may not be necessary, but should we get into that need, I think that we need to have an opportunity for students to have those lactation rooms in the middle school area. And thank you for sharing the information regarding that it's not a standard room that will be available every year, especially in some of our older buildings where we have limited space. But should the need arise, accommodations will be made. I think that's very much appreciated. And the other comment is all of the support around our pregnant and parenting students, I think is very, very good and very necessary when it comes to the health. And I'm wondering, on the parenting side, do we continue on, let's say, should a student get pregnant in middle school? That student, if they're in the eighth grade, they have five years, and that child will be five years old by the time that student graduates. Do we continue on with parenting classes, in particular, you know, best practices or, or things like that? Do we make that a part of the, the parenting services that we get? Or is it just within the certain number of months after that child is born?
And I can check into that. I don't know how long it actually, I guess, I would suspect, based on what the nurse supervisor had shared, that it sounds like if the student is a parenting student throughout the timeframe, they're going to provide the support. But that, I think, is an actually important question that I will ask them, because that's something that could be also incorporated in the administrative procedure. Because it really, it doesn't matter really what age their child is. If they're parenting, they're parenting. And at each stage of a child's life, you deal, deal with different types of challenges and stuff. So I think it's important to provide that kind of support. So let me, I will talk to them about that.
Right. In particular, around, if we're talking about a, a parent who eventually their child will become of school age, there are certain requirements that we are expecting kindergarten and pre-teen students to come in with certain skills. And so that's why I'm thinking that we need to go beyond just the health and wellness piece, but also into the parenting education and prepping. That's how to one day become a PGCPF student as well.
Okay. Okay, so Ms. Williams, Board Member Williams, are you comfortable that those, those kinds of specifics can be addressed in an A P? Or do you think we need to change?
Absolutely. I don't think we need to. My comments do not require changes to the policy.
Okay, I appreciate that. And Board Member Boozer Struthers, your comments, do they, do you believe that they need, we need to change any of the policies? Are you comfortable with the policies going forward and the specifics in an A P?
Yeah, I, I think I heard Vice Chair Williams say to add middle, if I'm not mistaken, to the actual policy.
And that's what I'm trying to get clear. That's what I'm trying to clarify.
That's the only addition, yes, middle school.
Okay, so do we want to?
I would agree with that.
Okay, I was going to ask that we make motions to move these four policies, I think it's four, forward for first reader. Do we want to make a motion? Do we want to do it separately, maybe do the three together, and then the one that we need to add some language to do that separately? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, so, okay, so may, can I have a motion to move draft policies, zero one oh seven Ethics Regulations, Maryland Public Information Act, M P I A, and Student Registered Sex Offender Entry Onto School Property forward as first readers to the, to the Board of Education at the June ninth Board Meeting?
So moved those three?
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, that we moved those three policies forward for a first reader at the June ninth Board Meeting. Any, any questions, anyone? We're good. Okay. Now, may I have a motion to?
We have to.
I haven't worded it yet, because you can word it. You can make the motion with the, with the change that you wanted.
No, we have to close the first.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, now we can go to the parenting, the student, parenting, pregnant and parenting students. May I have a motion, please, with the words that you want in that motion?
I move that we accept the policy for pregnancy and parenting parents and include where it mentions high school only for, for accommodation for nursing to include middle school.
To include middle school accommodations for nursing?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and properly seconded that the parent, pregnant and parenting students draft policy move forward to the Board as a first reader with a change to include nursing station, nursing accommodations for middle school. Is that clear enough for you, Ms. Welsh? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion passes. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Board Members, and thank you, experts, and thank you, Ms. Welsh, for paying attention and looking at those comments. That's very important to the students and the public. Okay, now we're going to review draft policy thirty-three twenty-three. Bids. Ms. Welsh, would you give us a summary of the draft policy, please?
Yes. So first of all, just to let you know, it was called, the policy was, it currently is called bids. But what we are proposing that we change the policy to purchasing because because um depending on the nature of of the of the um uh the whether it's a, and you'll read through it, and we actually have our expert here, Key Stewart, who will be able to explain much of this to a much better detail and make it more clear than I can. But saying that, depending on the nature of the um the um interaction, for example, whether it's a invitation for bid or request for proposal really determines whether or not we're dealing with bids per se. So therefore, purchasing sort of is an all encompassing encompassing term that really sort of addresses each situation. And as you look at this policy, you'll see that we, the policy is mainly focused on being able to increase the um the the um what has to be competitively bid for like equipment, materials, services, and supplies from um what it was is twenty-five thousand right now and have it increased to fifty thousand. So that is probably the first focus, and you'll see that under the standards as um number um as A. But then the um we have exceptions, and then with each of those exceptions, we actually, and this goes to when we are purchasing instructional materials and supplies, then the the standard is up to a hu- a million dollars. We do not have to um, we do not have to go through the um the bid process during that. And I'm, again, I'm going to let Mr. Stewart explain it a little bit more clearly. Then we also address um instructional um, hold on, instructional and staff development contracted services and then professional services, the contracted, the instructional and staff development contracted services. There is the limit of five hundred thousand, and then with professional service, the limit is two hundred and fifty thousand. So without spending very much time on my end talking about, I think probably Mr. Stewart would do a much better job at sort of explaining the difference in each of the areas that we have in the procedure or in the policy, excuse me. So, Mr. Stewart?
Okay, that's fine. Mr. Stewart?
Good afternoon. Yes, uh to to piggyback on what uh Ms. Welsh was talking about, uh changing name to purchasing and bids for for lack of a better word, got changed to propos- uh to uh purchasing because we write IFBs, which is an invitation for bids, when we award contracts to low low bidders. And then we have requests for proposals when we're particularly buying services and construction. And technical expertise is sometimes more important than price. So, you know, and in the previous policy, it didn't address it. It referred to everything as a bid, and that word is taken off. So anytime somebody submits a requirement over to purchasing, they say a bid. But in fact, they could be either asking for an IFB or a a request or a a low bid purchase if it's an item or a service that can be well defined or a, and if they're looking for a service that technical expertise is required, they'll use a um RFP or a request for proposal where the contractors will submit a technical proposal, which will get evaluated coupled with price. And at their times, it will not get awarded to the low price because the low price may also have a um a low technical, a low technical score, which means that they're not the best value to the school system. So, you know, we did change some language that allows us to have the right um to award these and when they will come to you for approval. The um the fifty thousand dollar change is a change that the COMAR has um put in a couple of years ago where they moved the small purchase threshold from twenty-five thousand dollars um to fifty thousand dollars. Um the reason for our request is right now, we're doing right around twenty-two thousand, for the last four years, around twenty-two thousand um line items, and a lot of the line items that we're doing are in those uh from one to twenty, uh one to twenty-five thousand dollars. And we're, anything over that, we're purchasing, and we're doing all the work. So uh increasing it would would create efficiencies in the school system to allow the end users to to buy the services or supplies that they needed. What we are, what we're proposing to do is when we have items that are between twenty-five and fifty, to provide you all a list so you can continue with an awareness of what what's being purchased. Um so you would all, so you would never lose the insight of what the school system is purchasing. Um and you'll have that awareness. Um we've also included exceptions, and as you know, the COMAR is 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 for um full and open competition. And in order to, in order to create efficiencies for the school board, we created areas or uh areas where we allow the school board to um to have an exception to the full and open competition. And there's three exceptions. One is written somewhere else in the COMAR, which is for instructional material and books. And the other two are for um for professional services and, you know, giving the uh school system the ability to purchase professional services on a sole source basis as opposed to going through the competitive process. And there's also when we are buying training um uh for the for the teachers and and instructional for the teachers. So they're the the major changes that we were requesting. Um and um if you have any questions?
Okay, we'll open it. If you're done with your presentation, we can open it to the Board Members for their uh questions and comments. Board Members, uh I see Ms. Williams stand up. Board Member Williams?
Thank you. Thank you for that um presentation, Mr. Stewart. I really appreciate it. Um I just needed a little bit more clarity around the sole sourcing. Can you um repeat that? Is there a dollar value associated with the sole source? Or is there any other criteria that has to be met when when you are allowed to purchase something without putting it out for bid?
Uh Board Member Williams, excuse me, Board Member Williams, you have feedback when you're talking. Uh Mr. Stewart, did you understand her question?
Yes, yes. Um there is only, um there's only really um three exceptions to full and open competition. The one for educational material is 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 um is in line with the other parts of the COMAR that allows school systems to buy instructional material and books and things in line with that. And that you all created a, or or the the threshold that was created in the past was a million dollars. And anything over a million dollars, we had to get full and open competition. The other two areas are um professional services, which the threshold is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And if there's a requirement for a consultant that we need over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they would have to um uh provide a sole source justification that would come to you for approval. And then it's instructional and staff developmental contracted services. And that's more, that's more or less training and development for the for the uh teachers and the education community. And that one's a half a million dollars. Anything over that, if we're buying classes and things to one vendor over that amount, we would have to come to you all for approval.
Okay, thank you so much. I I missed that uh dollar value. Thank you.
Any more comments from Board Members? Okay, hearing none. Um and I thank you, Mr. Stewart and Ms. Welsh, for um for that presentation. And I understand uh sole sourcing, but I also understand that there are criterias that must be met to um in order for us to do that. So, uh let's see.
One more time and I'm fine.
Okay, you still have that feedback.
I'm sorry, I'll be really quick. I just wanted to, I just wanted to add that um thanks for adding that that information around um uh, what was it? It's gone out of my head.
Sole sourcing, maybe?
No, it wasn't sole source. It was on the regular bid about we are able to award a contract, but especially when it comes to a technical expert. The reason behind that accepting the lowest bid because the technical may not be the best qualified. So thank you for adding that language.
Yes, I agree. So any more comments? Pa- uh Vice Chair Pamela Boozer Struthers?
Yeah, thanks. I I, you know, before we vote, I just wanted to speak in support of these changes. And I'm really glad we're getting the fifty thousand dollar uh threshold into the policy now. So there isn't confusion moving forward on that. So I just wanted to thank Mr. Stewart and uh everyone who worked on this uh to help us uh get in compliance here. Thank you.
Yes, and and I tried earlier to talk Ms. Welsh into going above fifty thousand, but she told me that's against the law. So I backed off. So I appreciated that conversation as well. So uh may I have a motion to recommend revised policy thirty-three twenty-three? Bid uh procurement, should I call it procurement in this motion? Or wait until it's changed, Ms. Welsh? Since the policy.
Since you're taking action on this, this, this revised one, then I think you have to call purchasing because that's the, that's the one you're taking action on right now.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh so may I have a motion to recommend revised policy thirty-two, three, twenty-three bids? I mean, purchasing be forwarded to the full board at the June ninth, twenty-twenty-second Board Meeting for consideration to send out for public comment? Thank you. May I have a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
That'd be now aye. Okay, the motion passes. Thank you so much, uh colleagues. I appreciate that. So now we're going to the number five zero legislative update. Uh Blueprint for Maryland's Future Act Implementation and Accountability. Uh Ms. Boozer Strutter, will you provide an overview of the Implementation and Accountability Board and reintroduce our expert guest, Dr. uh that are here with us today? Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. I'm really excited the.
Okay, you're 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 breaking up. Can you, can you move around a little bit?
Stage of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future and the uh Implementation Oversight Response. I I'm not, I think it's uh related to my phone. Any better?
Yes.
Okay, I'll keep going. Um so it took a couple of years for the Accountability Board uh through the Blueprint for Maryland's uh future legislation to come into place. Uh Dr. uh Kara Libby can explain how PGCPS has been complying with reporting in the meantime and also of about what it means now that the Accountability Board is in place. But we're, as a, as a local uh LEA, we are uh taking a a good step in governance and adding this agenda item to our Policy and Governance Committee meetings and making sure that these uh reports are coming to the board on a regular basis. And and I do want to thank Dr. Libby for the uh great collaboration we have in that and um really excited to hear the report from her team, and I'm going to have her introduce her team. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Will the PowerPoint be shown? Thank you. You can go to the next slide. Right there. Yep, thank you so much. So I'm Kyra Libby, Strategic Initiatives Officer, and I have Dr. Nina Jacks and Ms. Selena Ward with me this evening. They are both my project managers and they will assist me with the presentation. So for this school year, Blueprint focused on universal pre-kindergarten, educator career ladders, ninth grade tracker system, mental health, concentration of poverty, also known as community schools, transitional supplemental instruction for reading and mathematics in grades K through three, tutoring and supplemental instruction for grades four through twelve in summer school. All of our quarterly updates for Blueprint and our legislative reports are on our PGCPS website at the link provided. Next slide, please. So MSD and the AIB, the Accountability and Implementation Board, are kind of working hand in hand for this implementation of Blueprint. Back in November, we started having monthly Blueprint Coordinator State Meetings. MSD now has a an office just for Blueprint, and we meet with that person on a monthly basis as well. Along with the state Blueprint Coordinator meetings in the MSD meetings, there there are representatives from the AIB that attend each of those meetings each month. As Ms. Boozer Struthers already mentioned, the AIB took a while to compose into a group, and they really began in January twenty-twenty-two once everyone was hired on and on board, and they're still hiring some staff. We had, actually had a meeting yesterday, and the representative, the executive director from the AIB, said now they're going to start delving into the interpretation of the law, looking at the requirements and providing future due dates to the local educational agencies. Now, as Blueprint coordinators, we feel that we're getting the guidance that we need to implement Blueprint. Next slide, please. One of the items that the AIB did listen to the Blueprint coordinators was the change in the implement- implementation plan timeline. At first, this timeline was going to be due June twenty-twenty-two. The coordinators, we did not know what was going to be involved, what we needed to include in the timeline. We didn't have any guidance. MSD, MSD and AIB went back, they listened to us, and they revised this timeline. So now you can see that they are going to have a draft by October. They will provide public comment in November. They will have a final implementation plan in December. And then the LEA implementation plan will be due by March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. What we've been told is that MSD is going to try to have, MSD, AIB is going to try to have one implementation plan and then share it with the LEAs, and then we plug into our, we plug in our data and our information. That's the recommendation as of today. AIB is going to have stakeholder meetings in June and July for input from, they said, everyone. And they should be sharing the dates with board members, community members, union members, et cetera, because they want to make sure that everyone has a voice in this implementation plan. Next slide, please. And this shows you the original date for the implementation plan and now the approved change in the timeline. So again, MSD, AIB will have their implementation completed September, October, final by December twenty-twenty-two. And then our plan will be completed by March twenty-twenty-three with technical assistance and training from MSD in the summer and the fall. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, we did have several reports that were due this school year. We had a report that was due to discuss how we were going to spend the leftover funds from twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one for concentration of poverty, mental health, and transitional supplemental instruction. We were able to carry over funds into in into this school year, but we had to submit a report to explain how we would spend those funds. We submitted that report on November twelfth. We had another report that was due on how we were spending all of the funds we received for technology. We submitted that report on November seventeenth. We also had another report that was due by December first that we submitted on. We also had another report that was due by December 1 that we submitted on June 30. We had to report on the COVID-19 pandemic and the effects on education. How did we use those funds for learning loss, student instruction, mental health, et cetera? We had a report that was due for summer school by January 1, and we submitted that report December 14. And we had a trauma and behavioral health issues report that was also due by January 1, 2022, and we submitted that report on December 15. Again, all of the reports can be found on the state website at the link provided. And I do have to mention, we receive kudos on how comprehensive our summer school report was. Next slide. We still have more reports that are due. We are currently working on the diverse hiring practices report that's due by July 1, and we are working with the Department of Human Resources to compile that information. We have a tutoring report that's due by September 1. We are working with the Department of Curriculum Instruction to collect all that data. And we have a draft of both of those reports currently in development right now. This summer, we will begin to work on another behavioral health services report that's due by November 1. Again, they are asking of how we have used the COVID-19 funding, state and federal funding, and how we have used that funding to help with student instruction, learning loss, et cetera. So we will work on the second submission of that report. And then we have another summer school report due by January 1, 2023. And the next slide. And so now I will turn it over to Ms. Ward, and she will present on universal pre-kindergarten.
Good evening to all. One of the main goals, focus areas of the blueprint is universal pre-kindergarten for all. So let's take a look at the numbers that we currently have. Currently, 3,761 students are enrolled in pre-kindergarten for this school year. We have 17 schools offering half-day classes and 90 schools offering full-day classes for the full school year 180 days. We do have one kindergarten class at Greenbelt Children's Center, and that currently has a capacity of 16 students. As I'm down, there is no direct funding from Blueprint for universal pre-kindergarten. Currently, what the proposed program would be is to move half-day programs to full day and establishing new sites for Judy centers. This will allow students to have more time to be prepared and be school-ready. Also, our Judy centers offer support from birth to kindergarten as well as adult education, childcare, and parenting classes. And then we also listed down what are our current Judy centers, which are Carmody Hills Elementary, Adelphi Judy Center, Early Learning Hub, and then Hillcrest Heights as well. Next slide. Onto our educator career ladders. This is what's currently posted from MSD, the information that we have available right now. This program is very much in the initial phase. All LEAs are waiting from guidance from the AIB as to next steps. And what we posted on this slide is what's currently available from MSD. Again, no direct funding from Blueprint at this time. Some of the proposed program additions are a 10% raise for teachers over five years, a starting salary of $16,000. LEAs would develop their local career ladders for educators. And then we have the additional program of what to offer national board certified teachers. Being current national board certified teacher would be a raise of $10,000 per year, and then an additional $7,000 raise for national board certified teachers that would agree to teach at low-performing schools. Next slide. And then on to the ninth grade tracker system. So currently, we are actually at phase two, but I'm going to step back to phase one, where in October 2021, to provide the school administrators, professional school counselors, the schedulers, Department of Student Services, and central office staff, an up-to-date look at students in high school for their first time as a ninth grade cohort. This platform gives you up-to-date information, letting everybody know if this cohort is on track for graduation on time. As of right now, there is no direct funding from Blueprint, but we are already on to phase two. That is adding additional data pieces like course credits, service learning hours, the actual test data. So this is really going to empower all our school personnel to know exactly where the students at and get them on the pathway for graduation. All right, on to next slide and to Dr. Jacks.
Good evening. As stated previously, mental health is one of the focus areas for Blueprint. And the funding for Blueprint, from Blueprint, I'm sorry, does cover the cost of the salary for the mental health coordinator. So the amount that you see there is going toward the salary for that person. Currently, the position is vacant. However, our previous mental health coordinator does support student services, and he also supports with documentation and reporting as well. The plan to move forward is to definitely hire two coordinators because this job is so significant. Part of the job is to support school-based administrators and also mental health clinicians within the schools. And they receive support from the mental health coordinator because there has been lots of loss, there's trauma, and there are other things going on as a result of COVID. Next slide. We move to our community schools. Right now, we have 77 community schools, and each of these community schools have one community school coordinator. They have to have a registered nurse, and each school has one or more mental health clinicians. Next year, we will have 97 schools total, so we are adding an additional 20 schools, and they will be cohort four. And this slide has links, so if you're interested in seeing the 77 schools, the link is there as well as the 20 additional schools. The link is there as well. With our community schools, wraparound services is one of the pillars. And just an example of some wraparound services that schools offer are, we have a capital area food bank that is offered at three schools at this time, but it is open to the community. It's open to the families, to the students. We also offer workforce development and eviction prevention programs. Next slide. Okay, so this slide has a graphic that was, well, the information on this slide was borrowed from our state superintendent's presentation. He presented in April to the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County, and this represents the concentration of poverty in Prince George's County Public Schools. As you can see, the graphic on the right is an example, is a graphic for Prince George's County. And then there's a chart on the left. On the left-hand side, this chart shows the characteristics of of a range of income or a range of socioeconomic status. So tier five is an example of families and students who would be living in poverty, and the characteristics are there. And then, of course, the range goes to tier one, and these students would not be living in poverty. So as you can see, the colors, the description here matches up with the map of Prince George's County. Next slide. Okay, transitional supplemental instruction is offered for K3 as well as tutoring for grades four through 12. In the wake of COVID-19, there were so many adverse effects, and we were definitely scrambling along with other school systems to find out, you know, ways to support students because this was so new for us. So luckily, there was money from Blueprint to help support educational services for all students. And some of the ways that we are supporting students in Prince George's County to regain any learning that may have been lost or just to support them through the virtual that we had for over a year. Tutoring was offered, or tutoring, I'm sorry, is still offered for students in grades K through three, and the original award is there on the slide. And the focus area for this is reading and mathematics. We know that those are two of our core subjects, and that's why the focus is reading and mathematics. For students in grades four through 12, there's an additional focus of social studies. Social studies does have an emphasis on reading. So the students are able to get that collaboration of the reading and social studies together. The use of funds go toward software licenses, staff development, instructional contracted services, as well as classroom supplies. And this program is slated to continue next year as well. Next slide. Okay, and this brings us to summer school. So similar to our transitional supplemental instruction with summer school, summer school was offered for free to all students in Prince George's County Public Schools. Again, this is in, as a result of COVID-19, we wanted to make sure that students did have opportunities to bridge some of the learning gaps as a result of our abrupt departure from in-person learning. So in the summer of 2021, the program did address a couple of different areas. Mathematics and reading language arts was available for students in K through five. And this program was in person. The other two programs for middle school and high school, those programs were virtual, but they did address mathematics, reading, language arts, and there was also some science and social studies there as well. So you can see the four bullets that have a little more detail about what took place in the high school programs. Next slide. Because summer school was such a success, we are continuing this year as well. There is one difference in our program for the upcoming summer 2022. The largest difference is that instead of kids, students in kindergarten through 12th grade, we are also welcoming our pre-kindergarten students to be part of the program as well. So the structures change just a little bit. There will be in-person for pre-K through fifth grade. The students in sixth through eighth will be virtual, and then high school will have options. We know that a lot of our high schoolers are working, so we wanted to provide as many options as possible so students can stay on that graduation track. And there will be in-person during the day. However, we do have evening programs that are virtual for students who are definitely trying to get course credit recovery toward graduation. And that takes us to our next slide and final slide.
Thank you. This is our presentation and update. Ms. Minkins Murray, we are finished and ready for questions.
You're muted. Okay, I'm sorry. We will repeat. Thank you so much for this in-depth presentation, and it's good for me to have the experts here with us because you bring clearer insight, you bring clarity to information for me. So school board members, do you have any questions, comments? Vice Chair Pamela Boozer Struthers.
Hopefully you can hear me. Good. Well, just thank you for the excellent presentation. I know I actually have the privilege of getting pretty close to this data on a regular basis because of my role with MADE in the Blueprint Implementation Oversight Ad hoc Committee. So I get to talk to Dr. Libby fairly regularly. But I wanted to, I guess, I wanted to ask if in your work now with MSD and AIB, is there a recommendation of how often the full board receives a report? You know, so the reports can come here at any time, you know, that you want to ensure we know what's going on. But I was wondering if you have a recommendation of that now that everything's in place, routine reporting?
So MSD and the AIB have not made a recommendation, but you know, we're welcome to present anytime you want us to. So, you know, if you want us to present maybe December and then June, it might be a recommendation. So you can see where we are mid-year and then where we are at the end of the year.
Okay, great. Yeah, because I wanted to make sure we bring a recommendation to the Agenda Setting Committee, you know, Dr. Miller and Vice Chair Williams and Dr. Goldson, so that they're aware of our recommendation. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Any other comments from any other board members? Okay, the only comment that I have, and it's really more of a question. I noticed that you had areas here that you were not getting direct funding from the blueprint. Now, I thought they, everything that I read, that they were funding everything. So I need some more insight on that, and who do you need us to talk to? Or is there another mechanism that you have to provide that funding? And as Vice Chair Boozer Struthers just stated, that would be interesting to the board, that you bring it to the board, if you have mechanism, if you have a funding source. We need to understand, you don't have to do that today, but we need to understand that, and we need to understand where you need our help. I'm excited about the blueprint, and I see that many things can happen for our students. I mean, I think this is unprecedented, and I think we have opportunities now that we've never had before. So I want to make sure that the board helps you do what you need to do and help you to get those resources that you need in order to facilitate whatever it is that we need. And as far as the positions that you outlined in your presentation here, I hope that you guys are already recruiting for those positions and have already identified a source to have money behind those positions. And for me, I'm not speaking of grants. When you're talking about personnel, I believe that needs to be funding out years. And grants don't always do that for me with personnel and benefits. So those are my comments, just for you to take back, you guys discussed it. But I'm with Vice Chair Pamela Boozer Struthers on the board needs, you guys need to report out to us regularly. I don't care if it's quarterly. And you can do it through this committee, or you can do it if, like she said, with the scheduling to the full board. But we need information, and we need timely information so that we can help. We just want to know how to help. We don't want to take control. We just want help. So however you can help us to understand how to do that well, then that's what we're looking forward to. Now, before I go with follow-ups and next steps, I want to give my friend Valerie Irvin an opportunity. I've missed her, and you've been so quiet today. So at least say hi to all of us, because you're back.
I am so happy to be back home. Thank you very much.
I am so happy to be back home. Thank you very much, Board Member Minkins Murray. We are so used to speaking to each other on a regular basis and it was, you know, I miss you too and I miss this committee. Great job today from Robyn as always on top of her game. So I didn't have a role of Board Member Minkins Murray, but I was really happy to hear from Dr. Libby and her team. It's something that I've been watching, as you know, very closely since the 90-day session. So this is a great opportunity and I want to thank Pamela Boozer Struthers for all that she's been doing to keep us apprised of what's happening.
Thank you so much. Now we'll move to 6.1. Follow-up from previous meetings will be posted on Board Docs upon receipt. The committee will forward the policies that we voted on tonight. I won't name them. You know what they are. They're on Board Docs to the full board for action on June 9th. And before I make my, well, these will be my closing comments. I want to give a special thanks to Ms. Ellis. Ms. Ellis, you've done a great job in coordinating the work and to keeping the work of this committee going. I appreciate that and I just want to acknowledge that publicly. Thank you so much. So with that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry. Board Member Williams?
Hi, sorry about that. I just, I just wanted to, she's going to hate me for this, but I just want to say happy birthday to our board member Pamela Boozer Struthers.
Oh, I didn't know it was your birthday, Pam. Happy birthday.
Thank you, everyone. Yeah. It's been a good day, but a busy day.
I understand. Well, enjoy some of it. Okay. So with that, may I, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Oh, wait a minute. Ms. Ellis is saying, I've forgotten something. What'd I forget, Ms. Ellis?
Will you apprise the public of our next meeting?
Oh, okay. Our next meeting is, I guess I looked over this. Okay, can you help me with that date? Because I don't see it.
Policy and Governance Committee meeting of this school year will be held on Tuesday, June 14th at 5:00 PM virtually. Please check the board page on the PGCPS webpage for more information.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that reminder. Now with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Been moved in seconds. If we adjourn, all in favor? Okay, guys, see you next month. Thank you. And thanks to all you experts. Bye-bye.